...now come to order, could I have a roll call?
Teresa Golden.
Steve Gazwell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Jason Peresky.
Great, if you would all join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, Happy New Year, everybody. We have a couple of upcoming meeting dates, one on January 19th and one on February 2nd. And I think, Pam, I don't have the agendas in the folder, but the 19th has no items right now, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so do I have a motion to cancel the January 19th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then our next two meetings would be February 2nd and February 16th. Sorry, just making a note. And then, one more item we have, Teresa Golden is sitting in tonight for John Hutsko. He is happily moving south, and we wanted to just thank him for his service for the last three years on the planning board and wish him well. And Teresa, you'll sit for him until such time as there's another planning board member appointed.
Sounds good.
Great. We have a couple of meeting minutes to approve, October 6th. Looks like I think all of us were here. Do I have a motion to approve the October, uh, Jason, maybe you weren't here on October 6th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from October?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jason abstains. November 17th, it looks like, Michael, John, you know what, we don't have a quorum to approve this tonight, do we? Two, three. Okay, we don't have a quorum to approve those minutes. There were five of us here, myself, Michael, John Hutsko, who won't be here, you and Bob, also not here.
No, I'm not sure if they weren't here, okay.
Let's hold, we'll hold off on those. Tom, I don't know if there's a, we won't have a quorum to be able to approve the minutes from that meeting.
Well, the board itself can approve them, there's no need that the ones that were there be the only ones to vote.
Okay, I don't know, did other board members who weren't at the meeting get a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, alright, then can I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstained, extensions?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Steve's abstaining. Okay, and then the last ones we have, I don't think I've had a chance to review the December 1st ones yet, so it's alright, we'll hold those over to our next meeting. And then our first item for tonight on the agenda is a decision for Alpine Industries' amended site plan on Route 82.
So I think we were before the board approximately a month ago, and we set tonight for the purposes of the planning board entertaining a resolution of approval. I think we did the Meg, did we do the Meg Beck last time?
We typed to this action.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so Michelle, I was gonna ask you about that, 'cause is the residence a second whereas, does that need to be corrected?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry, I'll read it when we get there.
Okay, alright, has anything else changed, any other?
Particularly, the only thing is, is to give you an update relative to, the plan had received Health Department approval back when, remember, this is kind of a rehash of an old site plan. We had to shift the site, the septic a little bit based upon some constraints and some fencing and so forth, so we made our reapplication to the Health Department. They're reviewing it, I don't anticipate anything popping back, which is gonna change anything.
But no significant change to the site plan itself as a result of that? Okay. Scott?
I just had one clarification, if you could, Mike, please. The seasonal display near the entrance, I don't know if that was ever actually shown on the plan, and I know there's a fence, an existing fence, and unfortunately we don't have a print here, but do you know if that fence is on the property line or?
The fence itself is on, is right on the property line, in fact, I know that, 'cause there was confusion as to where the property line with the fence was, and are they the same thing?
Okay.
So in terms of seasonal display, I know-
So you imagine that to be in front of the fence in the right of way, or?
No, I think we kind of, at one point we talked about in the front, there was an area where there was some stone. This was, this came up as part of Brendan's review.
Which is in front of the fence?
Which is in front of the fence, and I guess at one point with John Deere, there was a display of stone, multicolored stone and so forth. Reality is, it's all grown in, and we were just gonna let it be and not do anything. So I don't think he plans on having any seasonal display at all.
I just think the one thing, if it is in the right of way, you would have to get the DOT sign off on that.
I don't have-
And then we'd also wanna be, you know, conscious of site distance depending on where-
The display was actually, it was like pavers on the fence.
It's pavers, yeah.
Yeah.
But I just don't wanna give authority to put something in the DOT right of way without their consent, that's why I had to-
Is the applicant requesting a seasonal display?
No.
No, so I think we can just strike the condition seven.
Okay.
Yeah, go.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, Michelle, do you have the alternate language for the second whereas?
I have one thing, Lori, on the number three, mentions the final SWIP approved. Given the size of this project and that it's an amended site plan, it doesn't actually have a SWIP related to it. It does have a stormwater drainage plan, but not a SWIP itself, so.
Stormwater drainage plan?
Right.
Okay.
And the second whereas should be, whereas the action is considered to be a type-two action under seeker, and no seeker review was required.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay.
And then maybe just one more minor thing, being we're kinda going through it. On item six, there will be no, and I would add bulk salt storage, no bulk salt storage except for salt in bags.
So if it's for use by the site itself, we're not concerned, but it's not for loading up trucks?
Well, it's saying it's just gonna be in bags, but it reads no salt storage except for salt in bags, I think it'd be a little cleaner if it said no bulk salt storage.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members, specials, does someone wanna offer the resolution? Aye.
Resolution to final amended site plan approval. Name of the site plan is Alpine Industries LLC. Name of the applicant is Tom Demasi. Location is 1374 Route 82 Hopewell Junction, grid number 655801029784. Resolution offered by Planning Board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for an amended site plan approval to include a 3,200-square-foot building on a 1.6 acre lot, and whereas the action is considered to be a type-two action under seeker for which no seeker review was required, and whereas the planning board held a public hearing on December 1st, 2015, and whereas the applicant has now submitted a final site plan and further finds that the application meets the town's requirements for final site plan approval, subject to the conditions set forth below. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project, as represented on a map entitled amended site plan for Alpine Industries LLC, prepared by M. Gillespie and Associates dated June 29th, 2015, and revised through November 16th, 2015.
That's the right date.
I just have a quick question, sorry. Is the 3,200 square foot building the existing building, or is that the new building? I thought the new building was smaller.
The new buil, the existing building is 3,200 square feet, the new building is 1,040.
I'm sorry, Mike, how many?
1, 0, 4, 0.
Be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the planning board chair. One, modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter of November 24th, 2015, and the town planner's letter of-
I'll have to get you that date.
TBD. And the traffic consultant's letter of September 14th, 2015. Two, the plat will contain the written approval of the Dutchess County Health Department before it's signed by the chairperson. Three, the final stormwater drainage plan, approved by the town engineer, and the maintenance agreement approved by the town attorney. Four, an inspection fee for the town's review of the proposed improvements will be based on the engineer's estimate as approved by the town engineer. Five, parking of any vehicles on unpaved areas will not be permitted. Six, there will be no bulk salt storage except for salt in bags.
Okay, so, Michelle, back under the first whereas, it will say, site plan approval to include an existing 3,200 square foot building and a new building with 1,040 square feet on a 1.6 acre lot. Okay.
Okay, anyone else?
I think we're good. Any other changes, comments?
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the, filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by John, votes as follows. Jason?
Aye.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And myself, aye, motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Guardian self-storage. We have two items for Guardian on the agenda. The first is the declaration of lead agency, I understand we have not circulated yet for that?
No, we have not.
Okay, do we know when we're going to do that?
Well, I just got the forms required from Ms. Robins today, this afternoon. I should be able to get those to Pam tomorrow or Thursday at the latest.
Okay. Okay.
My understanding is I have to fill out the forms, bring packages to the planning office, and the planning office will physically mail them.
Right, so then we wouldn't, we can open the public hearing, Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you, 'cause I know it just doesn't matter, if we open the public hearing, we're gonna have to adjourn you until-
Yep.
-the interested involved agencies have sufficient comment period.
That's my understanding, yes.
Typically at least 30 days.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
We're prepared to proceed.
Okay, okay. Pam, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing for Guardian self-storage?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Frank Rettel, project manager for Herb Rettel Properties and Guardian Self-Storage. With me this evening is Kelly Rettel-Hardesty, she's one of the owners of Guardian Self-Storage. We're here for a public hearing this evening. We were here last in November, and at that time we received comments from the town's consultants and also from certain board members. We took those comments and made revisions to our plans. What we have on the screen before us now is the revised plan, which we believe incorporates the comments made by the board and its consultants. Guardian Self-Storage is on Route 376 near the intersection of Lake Walton Road. Its original site plan approval goes back to 2000, and there was an amendment a couple of years later. The property is presently improved with an office, and 10 self-storage buildings have already been built out. The approvals that were granted to Guardian also permit one extra building in this area, but it was a much smaller building as originally approved. We're seeking an amendment to that plan to erect a 15,975 square foot building. It'll be one-story. They're based upon the, let me back up a little bit. We don't have it on the screen now, but we have provided plans to the town that show that there is proper and adequate ingress and egress throughout the site, not only with a 55-foot tractor-trailer truck, but with one of the town's hook and ladders. We did receive a template, and it fits on the plan fine. Based upon, I believe it was the chairperson's suggestion, up here, we also inserted parking spaces along the side of the building. That will provide for an orderly parking along the building without congestion in the alleyway between the building right next door. This'll never happen, but there are 10 cars parked around that comfortably.
Okay.
We'd love it if it would happen, it's just self-storage industry's not like that.
Well, it seems, you don't need 10, right?
No.
Okay.
No. Our anticipation is, right now, average traffic on this site is about 15 cars a day. With this new building, we anticipate the new traffic to only increase three, maybe four cars per day. That's it.
But you could queue, if there's two or three people in the building, they'll easily park, and nobody's gonna block anybody in, or?
Correct, correct. Now, inside the building, all of the storage units are gonna be accessed inside the building. There's gonna be no overhead doors outside, opening and closing. There'll be four-foot doors around the building, only on these three sides. You go in the building, go down a hallway to your unit, and all the units are just accessed inside. There's absolutely no ingress or ingress to the building on, I believe this would be the westerly side of the building, between us and the child daycare center there. There's also planned to install some additional drainage and infiltrator system over here, I believe, at the suggestion of the town engineer. We are adding a little bit of impervious surface for the blacktop around here to fill in some spaces. We've already appeared before the architectural review board. We've submitted elevations to them, color samples, and I believe that everything has been or will be approved by the architectural review board, they didn't have-
Do you have those elevations with you tonight? We usually, our meeting doubles as the ARBs help the hearing as well.
No, I don't.
When we adjourn you, we need to make sure at the next meeting you have all the elevations that are approved by the ARB to be able to share with the public.
Yeah, well, the elevations that we have, well, you probably want the large elevation plan that we gave to the ARB.
If you, if you have something that shows the basics of the building, that's fine, and then, yeah, we should have the ARB information for the next meeting.
As a matter of fact, if you ahead, this plan here is, can be brought up on the screen.
Okay.
It's just not, I don't have the colors with me to see.
That's fine, that's fine.
Uh, is there any security inside the building? No. The security is a fenced-in area, and access into the site is through a security gate. You'll have to have a code to be able to open up the gate. Each and- 24 hours a day? Pardon me? 24 hours a day? Yes.
And presumably individual units would have security by the, whoever's renting the unit? A lock or something?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Each unit, yes. The unit owner does put their own lock on there, absolutely.
Okay.
Correct. Right, but there's a hallway inside that? Well, inside the building? Yeah. Yeah, there's a hallway inside, and that's where you'd get to the units. Any video cameras, anything that go in there for security? I don't think we do.
We have video cameras out of the front of the property, but not inside. It's not unlike the other two buildings that we built, they're the same.
Right, my concern is just people being in there in the middle of the night, something happening.
I was saying, we wouldn't see them till next morning anyway, not 24, man. You know, we can see who's coming and going, but it's not like a security camera, I'm sure.
So how do they gain access to the building? Through doors, there'll be a door here, a couple of doors on this side, and two doors on this side. On a security card? Or? Can anybody just walk in there? Yes. I understand that you gotta go through a gate with a security card? Yes, they can. Or keypad.
There's a gate with a keypad up front, we monitor, we know exactly who's coming and going, we know who their names are.
But then anybody can go into the building on the property?
I guess they could.
I'm just asking. They could.
Not typically as-
And we would know, we would lecture the property at what time based upon the code they punched in. But there's nothing different in this building than the other existing. No. Everything's exposed. Yeah, right now, there's two, there's two buildings already up right here, both of those are temperature-controlled buildings, built this style.
And the property is fenced too, as you know.
No, I'm- I was gonna say, there's no change in the overall security, it's the same keys. All we're doing is adding a building. Frank, there's some existing boats, stuff in the space now, that's all- That's gonna be removed, yes. All gonna go away, okay.
Do you know when that's gonna happen? I'm assuming you must have leases right now, or?
Yeah, we're waiting for some of those leases, I would say, I think probably early spring, all of them will be expired.
We're not running to anybody else, unless they leave, they just go.
Yeah, we're not accepting any new customers for that spot, we're waiting for the other ones to wean off.
Okay.
Do you still have a spot for boats and campers and stuff like that?
That's where, we're not going to have one going forward, that's where this building is right now, and as the leases move and they move on-
And that's it, so they're all?
Yeah, we're not leasing, we're not leasing to any more vehicles either.
No.
Are these leases that have specific expiration dates, or are they month-to-month? I mean, could it be like years before you're able to build this, or how?
They're month-to-month, but some of these people, I'm just trying to give them a little bit of break for a couple of months to make sure, I thought it was gonna be a terrible winter, so I just thought, well, March, April, when we start to build.
Still don't know, but.
I know, I know, I just wanted to make sure they had plenty of time to get, to move their vehicles and do what they had to do when the spring came. I'm hoping we can break ground this spring, so they really have to get out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Would you like me to jump ahead to the elevation portion of this?
Sure, yes.
Well, unfortunately, the screen doesn't really give justice to the elevation plan, it's a little darker than the actual. The, this up top is just the roof, it's not a mansard or anything, that's just the roof. There, you can probably see it here, on the backside of the building, facing the childcare side, there are going to be faux overhead doors. We're doing that for aesthetic purposes.
I'm just gonna have you stay near the mic for us, so we-
Just instead of having just one blank wall, because there's no access there, we thought we'd dress it up and put faux overhead doors in.
So it'll look similar to the other buildings on the site?
Correct, correct. The faux overhead doors actually go all around the building, they're just for looks, they're not gonna be opened up. The access doors are the four-foot doors that you see in white on the plans that have been filed with the town.
Okay.
We're using a stenney board for the walls. We've submitted the colors to the architectural review board, they're earth tones.
Are they consistent with the other buildings on site, or will they be?
Yes, everything is consistent, so that the buildings will jive together.
Okay. Okay.
There will be some additional lighting on the building, in the form of wall packs. They are all shielded, so that the light shines down. We have submitted a lighting plan to the town showing that there'll be no adverse effect upon any neighboring properties from the additional lights.
And are they primarily near the doors?
Yes.
Or are there also some on the backside?
No, there's no lights on the backside here, they're primarily around the doorways for entrance. We're not gonna be lighting up the back of the daycare center at all.
Okay.
And incidentally too, with the original site plan approval, a lot of white pines were planted along this whole perimeter. Those have grown really nicely, they're about 20 feet high now, and they've filled in, and this whole section between us and the daycare center is pretty well concealed.
And you don't anticipate having to move any of those, or?
No, the trees are staying.
Okay.
They look good, provide screening, they look nice.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Let me hear to hear public comment.
Well, let's, Brendan, if I could just have you, do we have all the site circulation, the turning rates that we need?
We do have the plan. My office is still reviewing the particulars of the access for the fire apparatus. It does appear that everything gets through there, but we just wanted to compare it to where the parking plan, to make sure there isn't any conflict there. For all practical purposes, it does appear that it accommodates that need of that detailed reviewing. They give the advocate the nod on that, therefore we're done with the review. That was the only open issue that we had.
But Brendan, rather, do you agree that the, that much parking is kind of an outlier, that based on the industry, that people are driving at once?
No, actually, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, they showed the templates of the, the templates for the turning of the fire apparatus. We just didn't wanna make sure there didn't any conflict with what they were anticipating and put any parking.
Ah, oh, okay.
But there's flexibility there, if they had to lose a parking spot or two, I don't think it's gonna be a huge deal, so.
Exactly, so that's kind of, that's one thing, and then we're just-
Would be the-
That's fine.
And just reviewing the specifics of the diagrams that they gave us.
Okay. Okay. Michelle, anything from your end?
I just had a question.
I'm just gonna have you pull the mic, we're having a hard time here.
I just had a question about the landscaping, so you've got existing white pines that run along the entire-
Yes.
Fence, okay, you're not proposing any additional landscaping?
No, we're not proposing anything additional. Actually, what's there is really quite sufficient, those things have really grown high and filled in together.
So it will be landscaping, and then it'll be, will be a small grass area, and then the pavement starts?
Yes, this is gonna be a grass area here.
Okay. Cool. Joe?
I believe you mentioned about the drainage, we had made a comment, and they basically put in the same amount of chambers that was on the original plan, and the size, even though the building size increased dramatically, the paved area and impervious seems to be almost equal to what was on that original plan, 'cause they had the pavement coming closer to the property the last time. So we felt they were roughly equal on impervious cover, just by adding back in those chambers that that was, that was gonna suffice. But as far as the circulation-
Did we need a formal calculation for that, or are we comfortable?
Well, they did, they provided all the prior reports, so it seemed to be fine.
Okay.
It was just, just putting in what was called for originally.
Okay.
One thing on that was the drainage, and I spoke with our architect about it, just maybe adding a note on the plan that says the downspouts would be directed towards those catch basins and chambers, rather than, you know, just having it spill in any particular direction, just try to grade it so that what comes off the building heads toward the catch basins.
Makes sense.
It was in our memo, but this was a carryover from prior comments about whether or not the fire advisory board was seeking to have full access around all sides of the building, and I'm not sure whether they've provided further comments on that since the prior meeting.
I haven't seen anything.
Okay. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Scott, anything from there?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know with this building, you're gonna pretty much use up, I think, the balance of your free area, so as far as like a staging area for the equipment, if you could try to maybe identify-
You mean during construction?
During construction.
Yeah, okay.
You know, just, so we don't, I believe there's other residences as you kind of go around to the left, I think it's also industrial, not a big deal on the north side or the west side, but just where you plan on staging the equipment, just to make sure we don't run into an issue with that, and typically we like to see like where the concrete trucks are gonna wash out, that you take those precautions to put a washout pit and things like that, that they're not making a mess that's building between the joint and property.
I understand, actually, the staging area is something we can add to the plan, and I know that working with the building department, they'll probably be involved with the cement pour and-
Well, they'll do the inspection, but I'd just like to nail down the staging area and washout, that kind of stuff, now, kind of as part of your erosion control. And do you anticipate bringing in a job trailer, or no?
We don't-
No.
Okay.
There's usually one piece of equipment on the property, there might be something just to move everything around with, but there's not equipment on the property. Everything's basically walked to where it has to be handled, there's not cranes, just nothing like that.
No, but you're digging, you're pouring concrete, I mean during construction.
Yeah, so we usually have an excavator or something, but that's probably the only Everything's basically walked to where it has to be handled. There's not cranes, just nothing like that.
No, but you're digging, you're pouring concrete, I mean during construction.
Yeah, so we usually have an excavator or something, but that's probably only a piece of equipment we usually have.
You won't see an army of trucks?
No.
Anything else, Scott?
That's it.
I just had a couple other quick questions. I think the, did the ARB ask you to identify where the HVAC units were going to be placed?
Yes.
And make sure they're labeled?
And we placed that, yes. The actual units themselves are inside the building, what's outside are the condensers. And we supplied plans to the ARB that showed where each alcove was for the, for the condensers.
Okay, and are those, do they require cement pads or anything like that? And are they all shown on the site plan?
Yes, actually, they do sit on the cement pad for the building itself.
Okay, all right, so you build it out as you're for the...
There's one located about right near, and one over here.
Okay.
Assistant Woods was on your side.
Okay, okay. And then just confirming, I had another note, and Brendan, I don't know if this was a comment from you, I can't remember where it came from, but that we wanted to make sure there was sidewalks from all doors and for the ingress and egress, or is there now pavement up to all doors?
They gave us an interior layout, and they don't have any doors coming out the rear of the building towards the daycare, so they wouldn't need a sidewalk back there, because all their doors are facing a paved surface.
So everything's either coming out onto pavement, or there's concrete and a sidewalk, there's an easy ingress and egress out each door?
Yes, Mr. Bryant's right. I received a call from Pam with the question if there is going to be a need for a sidewalk. And we did supply a floor plan showing the interior of the building, where the units are and the hallways. The only access to the building in or out is just on the paved area. And Mr. Bryant's correct, there's no ingress or egress out the back, it's just a grass area. So we respectfully suggested no need for a sidewalk. The blacktop goes right up to the doors.
Okay, that's fine. As long as, as long as someone, if someone needed to get out in the event of an emergency, there's, every door allows them to exit easily and get to...
Yeah, we checked the distances for egress and everything, and everything...
It was just a note from a couple weeks ago. Then, just my last, my last note, and maybe it's just more of a confirmation with you. This is strictly storage. I know this building is going to be indoor storage as opposed to access, units accessible from the outside, but there's no intent to have any active use. It's strictly storage.
There's no office.
It's all self-storage.
Okay.
All self-storage.
Okay. And the whole site is the same, each building is just self-storage, okay?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, good. Then let's go ahead, unless there's any other comments, let's go ahead and open for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to offer comment on the Guardian self-storage amended site plan? If you want to offer comment, we'll have you come on up. We have, come on up, yep. And if we can have you, we've got just a clipboard here, we need to capture your name for our minute, so we can, there's a clipboard there you can sign in.
You can walk over there and do it?
That's okay, yeah. Thank you, sorry. No worries.
Steve, would you have spoken up if you knew it was going to be this complicated?
I hope so. Thank you.
No, it was just by way of agreement. We were concerned, because where my neighbor and I were, nine and 11 Lake Walton Road.
Okay.
But it has nothing to do with getting anywhere closer, you know, toward the road that we see. Basically, the comment is, it's really good the way they're doing it, especially keeping the trees, that you were saying, whatever's planted there is a nice little buffer. And actually, it was just, the comment was in way of agreement, actually.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to offer comment? Okay, great, come on back up. We have to adjourn you, because we haven't been, we haven't been able to declare lead agency yet.
I understand.
We need you to get it circulated, because it takes 30 days for the comment period.
My, I was going to suggest, if we could, to try to keep things moving, is perhaps to adjourn it to the February 16th meeting. That would give us adequate opportunity to...
That gives you about a week to get everything done and in the mail.
Yep, so, and today's the 5th, so I'm figuring that February 16th, we'd be ripe to continue.
Okay. Michelle, any, are you comfortable?
I told him I would be here tomorrow, and I could help him with the...
Yeah, if you get stuck on anything, don't struggle through it, just give Michelle a call, or give Pam a call.
When are you going to be here?
I'll be here in the late mornings, and...
Okay. All right, so unless there's any further comment, do I have a motion to adjourn the Guardian self-storage amended site plan discussion and public hearing to February 16th?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
And let's make sure you also have your ARB elevations, the color elevations for the next meeting as well, please.
Will do.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a renewal of a peddler's permit for in-the-doghouse on Route 82.
Going on?
Hello?
Hello.
Is he early or late?
Is he on time?
No, he's on time.
He's on time, he's not early.
No, I'm not in the doghouse.
Not in the doghouse. We appreciate that.
I almost forgot.
Pam, do we have everything we need to renew this peddler's permit?
Yeah.
Get you.
Insurance, and...
We use the...
I'm sorry, forgive us.
No problem, no problem.
Do we have everything we need to renew the peddler's permit? Okay. Are you doing anything different at the site?
No.
Didn't I see you were selling like women's athletic apparel?
Well, I'm just trying, but not really.
Okay. Natural weight for hot dogs, but, okay, but I mean, I guess that's all covered under...
Sales.
Is that, I'm not sure the peddler's permit allows that. I think peddler's permit allows sale of food. Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm looking at you again.
I'm not sure what the language is, I have to look at it.
You could add to it.
Survey says?
It's for the community.
I mean, I'm okay with it, I just want to at least amend it, so that, you know...
Well, I'm not okay with it turning into a huge line in more clothing than food. The original intention was as a food permit. If it's something that's ancillary, I think that's okay. I don't want to see like another trailer or something.
I would challenge you to define ancillary in that. You know, I went to Nathan's the other day, and they were selling women's athletic apparel, too. Who knew, you know?
I had T-shirts one time, in the doghouse, T-shirts, too.
That would be a good definition of ancillary. It's got the logo of the restaurant on it, how's that?
That's ancillary. I mean, I'm okay with it, but I just, I would like it to reflect what's really going on there.
So Michelle, I guess I'm asking again, is it, is that permissible or not permissible?
Let me go get the code, I can look.
Okay, all right. Bear with us one second, because if, and then Pam, do we need to amend the application if the code allows sale of apparel in addition to food?
Oh, Lord.
Let me start and see what happens.
Just while we're, while we're waiting on Michelle, remind us again roughly when you open, when you close, hours of operation?
11 to 4.
And times of year?
I'm going to start back in March again.
Back in March, okay.
If William tells back up, debatable.
Yeah.
They're hurting the business without him.
And you run from March through what month?
What was it, February?
No.
No. To October?
March through February.
It's a year. Well, it's a yearly permit.
Right, but I...
Yes.
So I'm asking you, are you going to run 12 months of the year?
Probably not, no, no.
Schedule, okay.
Yeah. Sales are down, nobody comes outside, cold.
Okay, so you anticipate opening in March and running through about what month?
October, the end of October.
October.
Yeah, October 31st.
Okay. You're right, it's a yearly permit, we just like to have a sense of when, when you're going to be running the business there. Just bear with us while Michelle...
Good.
Okay, so are we going to have, we're going to ask that you revise your application for us to include the sale of apparel? And then, anything else that we would need to change with regard to that?
Can we just do that here?
Yeah, we're doing that right now.
Okay.
What's that? That's fine. I just want to make sure whatever we're approving tonight reflects accurately what we're authorizing. All right.
It was in the doghouse for a little bit.
Do we need the application re-signed, or anything else done before we issue?
Initial.
So if you want to just step over and go ahead and initial? So primarily food with some apparel?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay. So do I have a motion to renew the in-the-doghouse permit for an additional year?
So moved.
A second? A second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Give her another year. Thank you. All right, the last item on our agenda is a discussion item for Mid Hudson Fence on Sprout Creek Court. And I think, Mike, you gave us a map of the site in our back of this.
You should have something.
Okay.
So actually officially on the agenda, it says site plan for Mid Hudson Fence, right? In fact, this, Mid Hudson Fence is right next to this. The operating site for Mid Hudson Fence sits right next to this. If you take a look at the map that you have, which is effectively the same map that I have here on the area map, you'll see that Frank Bula, who's with me tonight, he is the owner of Mid Hudson Fence. Mid Hudson Fence sits at the corner of 376 and Sprout Creek Court. And then there's another parcel.
So there's common ownership, but with the name wrong on our agenda?
It does, yeah, it doesn't matter, it was kind of just thrown on there quick for the purpose of discussion tonight. So, but the official Mid Hudson Fence site is on the corner. This is another piece of property that's a buttsit, which is right next door, which is also owned by the same owners of Mid Hudson Fence.
Okay.
And we'll talk about Mid Hudson Fence as well, but we're talking about the site next door first.
Okay.
That's all right. So let me lay this out for you. Mid Hudson Fence itself does have an approved site plan that goes back probably 30 years. The property that's owned by Mr. Bula, right next door, is effectively, has been effectively up until September of this year, vacant site, okay? I will, that being said, there is an area on the backside of the, of this parcel, which if you take a look on the map that I provided you, which is just a very quick sketch to kind of get a feel for where we're at and what's on there, which was prepared in record lightning speed this afternoon, for the purpose of tonight.
That's fine.
It kind of shows that there's been some encroachment relative to some of the storage area for the fence next door, okay? So the reason that we're here tonight is there was a citation issued by Mary Mens to both this site and Mid Hudson Site on the corner, relative to conforming to a site plan. This site right now is currently being used, albeit temporarily, by a contractor who is doing work for Central Hudson on the power lines, which are just a stone's throw down 376. If you can take 376 past Sprout Creek, you may have seen on both sides, there's some activity coming in and out, so they're doing work on the transmission lines and so forth. So approximately over a year ago, Frank had gotten a call from the contractor, who Central Hudson contracted with, asking if they could use this areas for staging, okay? And they kind of verbally said, yeah, sounds okay, and let me know. And then they were supposed to be there a lot quicker, and then he got a call, let's say late August, saying, listen, we want to, we want to move to the site if we can. So what we have out there now, which is depicted on your plan, is basically a staging area, okay, for the contractor doing the work on the longer central power lines. The, this is always intended to be a temporary type situation, certainly never permanent, albeit procedurally...
Can you define temporary?
Well, spring of 2016 is when they're supposed to be out of there.
Okay.
Okay, that's in terms of the contract that Frank has with them, that's, so you're talking September to spring, which is basically a six-month, eight-month deal. So they have, they basically have established certain things out there in terms of closed containment. They have spools of wire, they have a, basically a gravelled area with a gravelled entrance, stone entrance which comes in. And again, some closed containers, reference enclosure, an area for parking. So effectively, while I haven't talked to the contractor myself, the way the operation kind of works is people come in in the morning, workers come in the morning, they park their cars to the left, okay? Which is, which is actually off the stone, in a, in the dirt area, grass, dirt area.
It's just passenger vehicles, it's not...
Right. Yeah, there, that being said, there was a piece of equipment there, not a, not a dump truck or anything like that, but that's when I went out there this morning, between yesterday and this morning. But effectively, it's for customer, it's for workers parking. And then what they do is they take, and then they move out to the site, do what they got to do, and then they come back, and then they take off and disperse. So that's, there is a trailer, or a construction trailer, which was actually parked at the site, which did not obtain a building permit, and talking to Frank, as part of his contract, it was never in there, that they were supposed to get that. So at the end of the day, we did have a meeting on this last week, Scott was there with Mary and Pam. He's got to obtain a building permit for that, that trailer, it just has to be. I did check, it is connected to the electric pole out there, so they do have electric running to it. They have two porta-potties on the site, which sit behind the trailer, okay? The, the site is actually lined with silt fence. They must have put up when they started, you know, not that they're moving dirt around, but they came in, dumped a lot of stone. I'm sure they knocked down all the high grass. And they've defined their limits in terms of their activity with silt fencing along the perimeter. If you get a chance, you'll see that, and that's depicted on here as well. So what we decided, what was decided was, in foregoance of a potential stop work order, was let's get something together, let's get, understanding that it's temporary in nature, get a plan together, get it before this board, tell you what the situation is, what the ongoing activities are, knowing that there is going to be a sunset at some point, and that's why we're here tonight.
What would be the use of the site after the, after the spring? Will it go back to just completely unoccupied, or are you going to...
I have notation on this map indicating that upon such time that this activity ceases, that the site will go back to what it once was, which is a vacant site. That being said, we'll also, we also need to talk about the overflow storage area in the back portion of the lot, because that's not part of the approved plan. There is no approved site plan for this, because it's a vacant lot. So in talking to Frank, you know, the ability to take that material and move it over to his, his site, the Mid Hudson Fence site, that's something that can be done.
So the overflow storage area, which is beyond the silt fencing, if I'm reading this correctly?
Correct.
Is there anything stored there right now?
There's...
By Central Hudson, or by...
No, no, the, what's stored there are overflow storage remnants of...
Does the picture reflect what's out there now?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, yes. If you look at the aerial, because that's actually depicted, there's notations on there, but it's probably small, but that kind of shows you the limit of what's out there.
You were cut off, interrupted. You said what's out there now is the overflow of...
The overflow of the activities and storage area associated with the Mid Hudson Fence site next door. Right. It actually has a separate, unimproved accessway, which existed prior to this occurring. I'll note, too, based upon dimensions, and again, I went out there and just kind of paced off and pulled some tapes and so forth. This, the edge of this actually comes more back to here. So understand that there may have been some of these, you know, in this area here, but that's been removed, and so it's not as extensive as that, but that's the latest aerial that I had. I just want to give you an idea of what was going on before, how it is just today, and kind of what's going on around it.
So the front, front half, the, the silt fenced area is temporary, the overflow storage will be ongoing, or is being requested to be ongoing, but it needs more of a formal site plan?
We're going to, in talking to Frank, the idea is to take that overflow material and move it to the site for Mid Hudson.
Okay.
Okay, so let's say at the end of the...
Is that going to be within, within compliance of the Mid Hudson site plan?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is that, if we remember on the Lehigh overflow site, there's a huge wetland back there. So I don't know if there, how much of that extends onto this property. So the, obviously, the closer it can get to the roads, the better off it is, staying away from any wet area in Sprout Creek, which is right there. I don't remember exactly where the wetland line was on the Lehigh property, but the rear of the property would probably still be wetland, and it was a DEC wetland.
I agree, that's true. So, talking about the site we have in front of us, a temporary use, which is going to be out of here in spring of 2016, we now move to the Mid Hudson site. There are, if you take a look at the Mid Hudson site, site plan, Mid Hudson Fence site plan, it's, it was approved, Frank went through the whole procedure and so forth, but quite frankly, it's compared to today, it's a little light on detail. It's just the way it was done 30 years ago.
That's fine.
So there's a display area, there are some things out there that he has now. There's a display area in the front, people want to come, take a look at different types of fences and so forth, which sits out front. There is an area behind the building, which is shown as... There is an area behind the building, which is shown as a storage area on the site plan, hasn't been probably maintained, you know, maybe during the, the winter and the, and the spring, whenever all the brushes knocked down and so forth, it's, 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 looks more like a storage area, but in, in August, when the weeds are growing up, it basically looks like, you know, material has just been thrown in the back there. So, the idea is to try and get that a little more manageable, and make it more like an actual storage area. The reality is, is, and maybe Frank, you can espouse on this, is, they go out there, they get a call to do a job on a replacement of the fence, they go out there, replace the fence, hey, what do you want to do with the old fence? If it's not in great shape, they can it, if it's in decent shape, they hang on to it, or there may be components of that fence that they hang on to. So, that's really kind of what-
There's also extra fence, you can make changes on, manufacture and build, someone throw it out, and store it, someone else wants to save it, and then probably a couple times a year, you have like a whole building, you can take them, all the sections, and everything will happen. Once you get to, a lot of it, three point of now, throw them out. You can change this one, but, of course, I can even not have it, I don't want that.
And speaking to Frank, I mean, the, the display area is an important part of his business, so, so, there's certainly a willingness to come back and come in for basically an amended site plan for the Mid Hudson site. So, at that point then, we would get that wetland line tight on, on the map, hundred foot offset, keep everything out of it, and then kind of get everything up to snuff relative to what exists out there now, so that way, there's a, there's a clean record. So, that was, that's kind of the idea.
And if you're going to continue to maintain any storage on this site as part of that process, you'd need to document it for this site as well?
The idea, again, yes, and speaking to Frank, he said he was moving that, but if in fact, it's determined that, you know, we want to have storage continued area, then right, that'll be part of our application.
Well, you may want to consider, I mean, right now, there's a big gravel area, that I would think if you're gonna vacate when this project's over, we'd ask to have that restored, but maybe it makes sense for him to use it as his overflow yard, and then just put some proper screening and a gate, a fence, like Lehigh did, and then take advantage of the gravel that was placed around.
Why not?
If, if, you know, may have to amend the application a little bit.
But that, then at that point then, the display area is on the Mid Hudson Fence site, and there's really, to move, it's, it's, it's the place where it should be, it's convenient, it's, so, that's not on the current approved site plan, so the idea, we would come in with that too, but if we had to come in for both, because they both work as one, then we could certainly do that, we can, you know, you're right, that makes sense, if it's there, why not use it, you know?
So, Scott, there's a violation on the property right now?
Right.
So, in order-
But this stays it, this stays it, the fact that they're here, that stays it.
And that, that's fine, but I think, as far as the motion the planning board would make tonight to approve the temporary storage from Central Hudson would be different than what we would do with the overflow storage that's currently there for Mid Hudson Fence. So, I just want to, is there something that's necessary for the planning board to do right now, so that, come springtime, Mike, I'm assuming you're saying you're going to be back here with a revised site plan for Mid Hudson Fence and possibly this site, to address the storage issue, which is fine, but I want to make sure that, I mean, we've got it, we've got an electrified trailer, we've got storage, enclosed storage, we've got-
I, I'm just thinking for the, for the material that's stored in the back, whether he could post a bond as security to say, either he's going to remove it from the floodplain where, where it doesn't belong, or relocate it to this area when the contractor vacates, just as security to make sure that it gets done. I think that would take care of the violation.
Are you proposing a specific amount?
Well, that's something that we can agree on.
Yeah, I guess, you know, what are we, January 5th? Believe it or not, I'm still doing delineations with DEC for the wetlands, only because the snow hasn't flown. I think we're, we're supposedly going to be okay till mid-January. One of the things that I'd like to determine, and I'm not the wetland guy, but I like to get an idea where that line actually is, get it on the map, so then we see how far off we are, you know, because if we're not, you know what I mean? Just in terms of, in terms of the number of how much that bond would be set out, how much we would actually have to move. I think that's an important variable here, relative to that. You know, I, I think with, with the record reflecting the fact that Frank is, is willing to come in and get his site plan up to snuff, certainly like to provide, you know, something of record indicating that we would have to be in, you know, within a certain timeframe in order to maintain this particular use, we could tie the two together, so that way he kind of, you know, that way he was handcuffed in that way, to assure that he continued with that site. I mean, that's, that's up to you, but rather than posting bonds and so forth, you know?
Well, if, if you want my opinion, under Article 7 of the Public Service Law, since the Central Hudson project's approved by the Public Service Commission, they have a preemption right. In other words, our zoning cannot prevent them from having the storage, since it's intricately related to the power line reconstruction. So, that the motion that the board could make is to recognize that, however, it doesn't exempt them from the building permit, and obviously from appropriate stormwater protection that you seem to be doing, or whatever. And then you could say that that would be for a period of, what is it, six months, Michael, before that?
Spring of this year.
So, June, July, something like that? Yeah, and that the condition, and that the, the stop work orders would obviously be deferred, provided that by the expiration of that six-month period, he comes in and amends and cleans up the other site plan.
Again, there's two, two issues. One is where the saving area is, and then the other one is the overflow from the fence.
I understand that, but I mean, the overflow-
Public Service Commission kind of-
Well, that, it doesn't, it does, the overflow isn't affected by the Public Service Commission, but they have agreed to come in to amend or clean up the Mid Hudson site plan.
We're talking, you're giving them six months to be able to get ducks in a row and get what was delineated.
Correct, because by the time, I think six months should be enough for you to come up with a plan.
And while I'm sympathetic, I mean, to what Tom just said, is this, is this lot being rented to the contractor, or is it just goodwill?
Oh, no, well, he has, he, he isn't a, he isn't a contract with them, and they pay him for the purposes of that, you know?
We have a similar situation at the Global Foundry site. There's an eighteen-acre piece of the parking lot that's being used by the Spectral Gas Line in Westchester, Putnam County, by a contractor, and they are exempt because of FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And they have that site fenced off, you'll see trailers and equipment and trucks parked there, and they're paying for the use of that space, but this is a difference, it's just a state-approved project, so it's a little different, but they have preemption authority.
Is there, is there any, is there any ability for the town to inquire whether there's any hazardous materials stored on this site, or, you've got enclosed storage, do we know what's there?
My understanding is-
And I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you, if we can have you-
You gotta give it a shout, because you get trouble.
Well, what I've seen, it's in there, it's copper wire, some fiber optic wire, some, basically cable, galvanized cable, the things that they run the lines with.
What's in the enclosed storage?
That's what's in, that's what's in those cables. I guess copper's very expensive, so they lock it up.
I was, I was out there, and I didn't see the drums, so I don't know if they, they're not there anymore.
Maybe they removed them. They had, they had black, black-
Well, maybe we could ask just that you get a letter from the contractors to identify what materials are stored there.
What's in, what's being used, I think that's fair.
I just want to make sure we don't have hazardous material, I mean, you don't, you don't have any pavement here, you don't have concrete pads, so, you know? And you've got a wetland nearby.
The one-to-one comment I do want to add though, is, Mike, what you alluded to earlier, where the cars parked is not gravelled.
Yeah.
And just the other day, I was over there, after a rain, whatever, and they were tracking stuff out onto, onto the road, so, where the cars parked need to be gravelled as well.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I, I don't know why they didn't, you know, because it's all gravelled, and it's pretty, pretty good-
Except for where they parked the cars, that's pretty, pretty white.
Yeah, they come in there and it's, it's all run out.
Right.
So, they do have, I mean, whether they did it on their own, they do have stone entrances, stone a little bit bigger than the smaller, bigger chink stuff that we usually have for stabilizations.
But they're still doing a lot of tracking, so they have to get that cleaned out.
So, I think, I think that's something we could tell them, that they should just line that there to make sure that-
All right, so, gravel under the car parking.
Parking, yeah.
Clarification on materials being stored? And I guess if it's, if they don't want to be specific, I don't know what the requirement, but just clarification whether there's any hazardous materials being stored, if that's, I mean, that's really what we're concerned about.
We'll, we'll get what we can, I don't think there should be any mystery to it, but, you know? Do you have a contact directly with the people out there?
Yeah.
Tom, do you prefer to do this by a, a short resolution at our next meeting, or do you want us to do just a verbal resolution, a motion now? All right, so we're saying six months through June 30th? And if you, if it needed to go past that, you just have to come back to us and explain, you know, I mean, I know you don't control what Central Hudson is doing, so if they're, if they are going to be there longer, we just need to understand that. But we're also asking that by that June 30th date, you've applied for your site, amended site plan.
And they told me April, in November, Mike and I talked, they said, "Weather dependent", I think if they have good weather, March, April, so I think we go to June, we're probably okay.
Covered.
If not, then we'll be back.
Okay, okay. And June sufficient, Mike, for you to get what you need to be able to delineate the site plan changes?
Yeah, the, the, the advantage I have is I have a copy of the old site plan on the other one, with meets and bounds, and, you know, it just makes it my life a lot easier rather than-
Okay.
-pulling the information from nowhere, so.
Can we just get back to us with a date, or do you want to project a date that they're going to take care of the gravel? Is two weeks enough time?
I'm going to say yes.
You're basically going to tell them they have to do it, right?
I, I have to tell, I don't know the contractor, like, I have to contact the Central Hudson boy, I will speak to him tomorrow, there's a town meeting.
And then let me know, and then I, let, then let me know that I can kick you guys an email.
Call them in a big bad town, so.
Yeah, I don't know, anybody's putting in a call.
Well, this is going much smoother, this is going much smoother than I anticipated, so.
And why you're calling them, is there, there is mud out there, they got to sweep it.
Yeah, and if you take a little more rate, a little bit, I'll go ahead.
Good luck.
You can get back to us on that.
I'll let you know, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Laura, I have a couple of things, but they're more, I think, for the later site plan stage, and Mike might already know about, and Scott mentioned, there's a floodplain on different parcels out, out near Sprout Creek. So, we should try to show the location of your floodplain on the plan. And there's also an access easement for the fire department to get back to the stream, because there's a dry hydrant. That was one of the reasons, I believe, why Sprout Creek is a town road, because there's a fire department access in that general area.
They just put that, they just put a department pad thirty years ago.
Right.
Is there, would that be used for anything? I mean, is it, is there any building nearby that could catch fire that they would need that for?
They have all those buildings on Sprout Creek.
And it's-
But we had these locations wrapped in town, so the fire department would have access to it.
Right, but I mean, that was in with, within range of-
Well, there's certainly buildings-
Okay, okay, so, okay.
They, they would probably be filling a truck and driving it, not necessarily running a hose from. Anything else, Joe, or, okay, all right.
So, we approved resolution tonight for the temporary storage, what happens to the remediation of the, say, the parking lot, after the fact, assuming it's not going to be used, that would be part of the new site plan?
We'll make a motion tonight, we'll propose a motion tonight that will have some conditions to it, and one of those conditions will be that within, say, thirty days, the gravel on, is thirty days too much, or, within thirty days, that there'll be gravel under the parking area where the cars are, that sort of thing?
Oh, no, we want that done in two weeks, within two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
But what happens in-
That's what I'm asking.
What happens in June, if they don't need that parking anymore?
Well, I assume they make it restored to its natural state, unless they-
Okay, that's the key that I want to make sure, I get it, yeah.
I just put this together for the purpose-
To amend your plan, to show the gravel, they can keep it, but if you don't, it has to be paved in apron in that scenario, so the gravel doesn't shut them down.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't catch what you said.
To try and memorialize this, Joe had mentioned, detail on the floodplain, showing the access easement, which we can take on, you know, this is, again, this is not a full site plan, but it should, again, it's something to memorialize it. I actually went, and I'm sure it's tough to read on, on there, but I actually provided some notes on here that go to some of the things you're saying. Can I, can I kind of kick through those real quick? Just, I came up with these on my own, so, let me know. Site-specific notes, the site is serving as a staging area for an existing Central Hudson contractor, this use is proposed as temporary. Number two, the information on this plan is strictly for purposes of sketch plan, based upon a site visit performed by myself. The aerial photo provided details the site prior to the site being used for the temporary use, and only has been provided to be used as a guide relative to the parcel in relation to the abutting parcels. A building permit for the construction trailer is required to be applied for. The existing overflow storage area depicted on the site plan is storage for the abutting Mid Hudson Fence site. The DEC wetland resides on the rear of the site, it should be verified, no activity within a hundred feet of the edge of the wetland occurs. Upon completion of the use of, number six, upon the completion of the use of the site, the site shall be restored to the condition as existed prior to. All disturbed areas shall be scarified, mulched, and seeded. Erosion controls, including silt fencing along the perimeter of the site, in addition to a stone construction entrance, shall be maintained during the length of the use of the site. So, those, those are a few nice notes that I put on here, just to, based upon the meeting we had. If there's something else you'd like us to add, we can do that to, so at least there's a record.
Mike, can you just tell me what number six, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read the little, seven was erosion controls, but-
Upon the completion of the use of the site, the site shall be restored to the condition as, condition as existed prior to.
But, the prior to is, is this?
Right.
Which, this is where it was clean.
Which?
No, no, it would, it would have to be, to restore the site to a vacant, unimproved lot, but-
What I don't have on it, is we'll talk about time, that within a period of six months, whatever the board feels, that a amended site plan for the adjoining Mid Hudson Site Plan, Mid Hudson Fence Plan will be submitted, and it will do eventually.
Just giving you a hard time, because I hadn't the chance to, that's all.
Okay. Bear with me here for one second, I'm just making notes, and then I'll, I'll offer a motion. Tom, do we need to make reference to the fact that this is a public service use, or I-
No, I see in the record, right?
Okay, all right. So, any further discussion, any other things we need to talk about? Okay. So, I will make a motion to approve a temporary use at the Bula site plan, which is adjacent to the Mid Hudson Fence site plan, for six months through June 30th, with the following conditions. First, that by June 20th, gravel will be placed anywhere where cars or other vehicles are being parked or stored on the site.
By what date?
By January 20th, what did I say, June? Sorry, I meant January 20th, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
That we will obtain clarification by January 20th on whether or not there are hazardous materials being stored at the site, that a building permit for the construction trailer will be applied for by January 20th, that the erosion controls will be maintained throughout the duration of the temporary use, that the site will be restored as appropriate by July 31st, and that the applicant will submit an amended site plan by June 30th for the Mid Hudson Fence to address the overflow storage on this site, and as needed, this site will be included in that amended site plan, again, based on whatever you, you determine with the wetlands and things like that. Did I miss anything?
I just had a question about the putting stone under the cars, if we get a snowfall, is that going to-
That's two weeks.
You still got two weeks, so, or do we want to say?
I'm not sure what you're asking me about a snowfall.
If we get a-
It should be done as soon as possible, because they're tracking mud out in the road right now, so I, it's no more than two weeks.
Okay, okay.
The intent, right, the intent is-
They go out there tomorrow, that's great.
No forgiveness for a snowfall, got it, okay.
And with the cold temperatures, it's getting better, because it's, everything's tight, everything's tightened up.
Forty degrees once.
You know, but, it's supposed to warm up again, so, we'll, we'll let them know.
Do they have the ability to park the cars on the ground?
Do they have the ability to park the cars on the ground? I mean, you know, do they need, do they need that, so they can't drive them on the grass?
Yeah, I'm not particularly sure why they have such a wide area for the stone, again, not having the ability to talk to the contractor, I'm not sure, but they certainly could not track it as far in, you know? Well, let's ask the question.
What else was I going to ask, Mike, speak them tomorrow, if they, we park on the gravel?
You want it on the ground, would that leave enough staging space?
Add ground, because it's under dying.
Right. Either way, either way works, either way.
If you're going to use it.
I think the way we worded it was that, that, that all cars or vehicles being parked-
Don't let Tom, Tom mandated it.
Gentlemen, the way we worded this was that all, all cars or vehicles being parked or stored on the site need to be parked or stored on gravel. Let me make one quick amendment, and that's just to reference that the temporary use would be as delineated on the sketch plan, sketch site plan provided as of January 5th, 2016. So, if they end up making significant changes to this, or they, they move things around, we just want you to come back and tell us what they're doing there. I don't anticipate that, but if it happens, make sure you let us know.
The only way that could happen is they're starting, they're starting to wind down the project, and it's a little over, and then remember-
Well, if they're removing stuff, I think we're less concerned, but if they're expanding it or bringing additional things in, again, hazardous materials, anything like that, we just want to understand if there's major changes happening there. Any other changes, questions, comments? So, I've made a motion-
My other question relates to the materials that are being temporarily, that are being stored that may be on a wetland. In light of the fact that you have spring coming, and the wetlands get flooded, do we need to get that moved? I know it's not the contractor's storage, but there is an issue, I think, come spring. Michelle, you're the expert here.
I feel like we need to have those, I mean, anything obviously that's being stored in the wetland needs to be removed, so I think we need to understand where that wetland line is as soon as we can, and I know that this is not typically the time of year you can delineate a wetland, so I'm not sure how accurate we can be. We can provide you with the Lehigh plan to show you where the line is there, we can probably assume that it's not any further forward from that line, but it might be as far.
It heads towards the stream, from the back there.
How much, how much area is, I mean, I can't tell, is this a hundred, do you have some areas, like, with the distances between here and the steel fence currently?
Yeah, this is, again, don't get wacky, because it's sketch, but it's about four-hundred-and-ninety-five feet from the property line, which is the longest line, so if you take the midpoint being five-hundred feet, two-fifty, you know, I, I have a feeling that-
It's more than a hundred feet.
Yeah, well, I have a feeling there's probably some of the, the pallets and fence pieces may be in the buffer. I'm confident that nothing's within a wetland itself, I think it's the issue of the buffer itself, which effectively runs along the edge of, of Sprout there, so-
Mike, when do you think that you'll have the delineation?
I have to, well, I can do it two ways, I can see what DEC scheduled to come out and do it, or I can get somebody, you know, privately out there to hang some flags and get an idea.
And Michelle, I know this is not the right time of year, so I'm, I mean, I think-
Are there any flags left from Lehigh? Have you seen that?
Did they, did they re-do that line?
Yes, they did.
He did?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they did it, you know, within the last six months, probably, or a year.
So, what I can do-
Might give us some kind of indication.
Well, it's the adjoining parcel, so-
Can you give us like an estimated map, not necessarily the actual delineation, but just tell us where you think it is right now, and where the buffer would be?
Let's start with getting, I actually did take a look at the DEC maps. It goes this way, the wetland, the majority of the wetlands are actually back here, and then it kind of follows its way up, it narrows down as you go up here, so, what are you doing? Let me start by pulling the Lehigh map next door, and see where that line, and match it up to this property line, because then at least we'll have, basically where, where the line exists-
You'll know where it starts.
Hard buffer on this side, then it'll just be making its way across, it's only two or three across.
And Joe just reminded me that the Lehigh buffer was delineated by a split rail fence out there, so you could probably just go out there and look where the split rail fence ends, it's exactly on the, um-
Is it in?
It's on the adjacent line, I think it's still in.
It's there, it was there years ago, that fence, the post rail fence is there.
Good, well, we did a site plan NF for a building years ago, so that fence was actually installed at the time?
Probably.
So, the fence is there, so, so-
So, if it's there, then we know where it is, yeah.
Oh, it's there, okay.
I don't know.
No, I'm saying the Wiki came out and verified the line, is that, then he must have verified, and the fence didn't move?
The fence didn't move, they, DEC agreed to the line.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll get it pretty close.
Mike, when do you think you can have that for us?
The wetland?
Yeah.
Line?
Even if it's the estimated line, it doesn't have to be the actual-
Oh, I think-
To Teresa's point, I think we just want to make sure if there's a significant portion of the storage in the buffer in the wetland area, we want to make sure it gets moved sooner than later.
All right, well, too, what I can do is, if, if you could pull out that plan, so I have that. And we're not going to, yeah, that's brutal. And then what we'll do is go out to the site the next day or two, and get an idea. I don't know, you know, again, is it a transitional wetland, does it drop off significantly? I don't recall, it may be very clear where things start and stop, to get an idea of generalities, but let's, let's take a look at the plan, let's go out there and take a look, if need be. If I can't get DEC out there within a reasonable timeframe in the next two weeks, then I guess we get Mike out there to hang some flags, you know?
I'm leaning more towards if you can just take what's existing, what you, what you can see at the site right now, what you know, what we know to have been done from the Lehigh site, and you can extrapolate it onto your site, I think that's good enough for us to know whether or not there's significant storage that needs to be moved.
Right.
And then at the point where it's appropriate to do the delineation, which may or may not be now, if it's come spring, then-
Get the hard line on the map. It's going to come into play on Mid Hudson, because I think they kind of stretch back a little further with the action, so.
Okay. So, is that something, we, we have these other, a couple other things to be done by January 20th, is that something you can do in the next couple of weeks, or do you need more time?
Yeah, the 20th will be fine. I got to get it done before the weather turns real bad anyway, so.
Okay.
Is, I know you're going through this, is this going to, is this going to be just part of the minutes, or is there a formal resolution, it's going to be prepared, I just want to make sure I have a, have a hit list?
I'm going to run through it one more time, too, just because I made the motion like half an hour ago, so. Okay, is that all right? Yeah, all right. Anything else? And Teresa, if we, if we're requiring the estimated wetland line and buffer by January 20th, then if there's further action to be taken, we can take it at that time.
Identify it then, yep.
Any other questions or comments from board members, additions, additional conditions? Okay, let me run through this really quickly one more time. So, we're, we're proposing a motion to approve the temporary use as proposed on the January 5th, 2016 sketch site plan for Bula through June 30th of this year. Sorry, we're proposing approval of the temporary use as outlined on the sketch site plan for Bula as of January 5th, with the following conditions. First, that all vehicles with, by January 20th will be parked on gravel at all times.